Here Tim.
I need to try and schedule me.
You have one more year.
I think.
Yeah, must be. Okay. Yep.
Kim?
Sure.
Fire department.
I've heard we have one.
What's your budget look like? Do I have to add these up?
Yes, because I don't add them up. I go through and move stuff around, add, subtract where I think it should be, and then let you guys play with it from there. The one thing that I didn't put in would be the numbers for the F I, FICA and the Medicare. Because I get the formula for that on gold and.
What are you looking for for new equipment, Kim, for a thousand bucks?
What's that?
What's the equipment you're looking to potentially purchase on your bottom line? New equipment?
On forestry or firefighter?
I guess it's forest. Yeah, I guess it's forest. Very bottom line, new equipment.
Way down at the bottom?
Yes.
Whatever breaks. We're upgrading, we're in the process of upgrading our hand tools. Going from the old hazel hose and council tools and Kenny rakes to what are now called rogue hose or pro hose. They're made out of old or used, I should say, discarable blades.
So what's is all your fairly flat?
I'm thinking what I came up with in my minds, other than the FICA, I may even be down just a little.
What's the Forest Fire Grant?
That is a grant that we are applying for, the same as we applied for last year. That was safety equipment P P E, helmet, no make shirts, pants and gloves.
Did we get it?
No, we did not.
That's why I said no.
So we applied for it again this year. And the prices went up a little bit. And that was also two backpack leak blowers.
So your new equipment on fire department, you have fifteen thousand budget in for this year. You spent seven thousand or forty seven percent. What are you, what are you planning on spending some money on?
For this year?
Yes.
We've got three sets of turnout gear ordered. That's about sixty seven hundred dollars. And the price for the tablet came in, it's somewhere around four eighty, which will pretty much wipe that out.
Yep. Turnout gear, let me ask you a question on that. Do you have any kind of policy when you issue turnout gear to new firemen? Do you get that back when they leave? Or do we have a commit, commitment from them that they will hang on for two years? Commitment with a town hall stood?
We can't force them to stick on. We, we ask for our gear back should they leave.
Do you know we get it back?
Most of the time. Right now, there's only one set that's outstanding.
Is that from B. Southman?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. The other, the other two that were outstanding last year came back?
Mm-hmm. Then we have to start replacing the turnout gear after every ten years. So next year, we're looking at at least three sets of turnout gear. Assuming we don't pick up any more new members, that we don't have gear that'll fit.
What is typically the turnover from year to year on fireman?
This year so far, we've lost three and we picked up three. Actually, we have a fourth one in the works, but his paperwork is not finished yet.
And that's an average from year to year?
It varies. It's cyclic. Some years, we don't get anybody. Some years, we get five or six.
Leaving or coming in?
Both. Over the last five years or so, the trend has been slowly upward. Five years ago, we were at about sixteen, I believe. And right now, we're running about nineteen that are fairly active.
So when you have turnover, do you actually have an exit interview with these people to find out why they're getting done?
Most of the time, they move.
Pretty flat. Well, not only is it flat, but he's under for this year.
So far.
So far. We're going to be close, I'm thinking. We've still got rush fire season to get through this fall, too.
Warren article?
Side by side. I don't have any further price on yet, and we haven't had a chance to get out and about.
Get some numbers. Anything else for Kim?
Nope.
Jesse?
So I came down seven hundred and fifty dollars and fifty cents. I moved some line items around. And currently, we are at fifty six percent of our budget. And we are also at about sixty percent of the calls we had last year. So I'm feeling like last year's budget was good. If we had the volume we had last year, which was an average year. This year, we're way under. We're at half of our typical volume. I hope that doesn't mean that in the next two months, we get eighty calls, but it could.
Is the only thing that sticks out from?
I cut the paramedic expense down again this year.
Be careful. Be careful.
Your training, what are you, got new, new members or?
Well, the last two years, I've booked five people through E M T class, so.
Are they active now?
As soon as they, they have all been very active in their right time, but they have to get their state license, which will happen first November.
How many people currently active, Jesse?
So ten have done more than, ten people have done more than twenty calls. And the rest have done less than twenty calls. Which this year, we're only at eighty two calls, which we should be at about a hundred and twenty calls by now.
I like your one, one dollar entry. Those are, that's good. For ambulance, please.
But you've just got to keep the place open.
I know. That's a good one. I'd be careful if I get your paramedic expense down anymore.
Well, the, so the paramedic expense is two hundred and fifty dollars. Where we've spent the most money in the past is with the unpaid balance of bills from people that Delusio transports from our town. However, at this point, thus far, Delusio's transported two people from our town this year. Because we've taken the rest. So a lot of that expense was not necessarily a paramedic expense, but.
And you've reduced your ambulance repairs. I'm not sure that's a good idea either.
She's got a clean bill of health.
From who?
Comitches. They went through it, lubricated the whole front end, checked everything, and they can't find anything wrong with it.
Would you like to take my car up to commit?
I don't, that's not good. So Warren article, I was going to ask for a ambulance out of capital reserve this year. But I don't know that it's necessary with the clean bill of health and the decline in calls. And I don't think it's something we absolutely have to have this year. So I'd like to book five thousand in placeholder into the capital reserve for next year.
We don't have placeholder.
Book five thousand more into capital reserve.
I guess.
Because it is coming up on twenty years, and it could be a catastrophic failure any given Sunday, but it could also be fine. And I would rather not spend money that we don't need to spend.
Thank you. Sorry, yeah. Anything else? Have you got anything?
No.
That's it. Thanks, Jess.
Did you guys want to discuss the computers? Because that came up.
Oh, that's, did you talk to Mary Ann?
Yes.
So that you, you can.
I don't know who you're talking to.
I don't know why that was even a concern. We need a new computer because we have four kilobytes of speed for our computer at the station that's report.
A stationary one?
A stationary one.
It's an electric charger?
Yes, and it just needs to be replaced. That's what the computer guy says. So we need one.
And Mary Ann wanted to know why we couldn't use Kim's laptop?
Well, because Kim's using Kim's laptop.
No, my laptop is dead.
That's where you. Where, whatever. Anyway, I just.
In Glendale, it was an easy discussion.
I mean, the laptop, there's like Windows Vista or something.
X P.
Six.
X P. I think there's like five or six.
I think this was a concern that was brought up over the purchase of the computer when I was gone that week.
That's right.
We wanted to know why we got two computers. One is a stationary one to replace, one at the electric station that we primarily do our ambulance reports on. We have a tablet in the ambulance that we use as well.
You actually use it?
We do.
And you bought a tablet, too, didn't you?
I've got one already.
For more than solid here?
Yeah, we use it for.
Mary Ann wanted to know why.
Use it for.
Minesweeper, too.
Mary Ann wanted to know why Jesse couldn't use Kim's tablet.
Because we already have it.
We can rule both from about the one from the police department.
She, she didn't, she didn't know that the one that he was buying for almost two thousand dollars was the one that's stationary over at the fire station. And she wanted to know why Kim, who bought one for five hundred dollars, couldn't share it with Jesse. Tried to explain it to her, and I asked Jesse to speak to Mary Ann and explain it to her, but he hasn't done that yet.
I have not, she's not sent me an email or asked, but when she does ask.
She may not be in town. I haven't heard much from her.
I'll tell her it's the stationary one.
So it looks resolved.
I like it. Job descriptions.
Okay. Since I was, our meeting last week, we've moved right along, and all the departments reporting into the board have submitted the initial job descriptions. There are still some that have to be worked on. And I'll have, we're, my wife and I are going away for a few weeks, so as soon as we come back, we'll work on those. But they're actually fairly simple. The vast majority of full and part-time employees are covered by the current submissions. I received the final departments today, and I have not had a chance yet to review them. But I'll do that also when I come back. What I would ask is if I could forward what I have to Kelly, and then she could, you know, put them in a final format, assuming that the board doesn't have any edits. If you do have edits, you have an email copy of what we had, and I will forward to you probably on Thursday what I received today, once I go through it. And now you'll have everything that I have. So if you want to just do a, don't edit the document, because I can get edits from everybody. So just put them in an email, say, I want, you know, in this particular description, add this, subtract that, or whatever it might be. Now, there's going, there are going to be some edits, all right? And format wise, we have different formats, but that's okay. What I want to do is to make sure that they legally will stand up to scrutiny. And so, and there's a few things that we have to add, but nothing significant. I'm hoping that the, the final pass on this, we're away, we don't come back till around the tenth or eleventh of November, but hopefully, within three weeks or so after that, the others will be complete, so we'll have a complete package. Now, those are positions that report ultimately into the board, you know, through your departments. I've talked to one library trustee, and the suggestion is that I approach them independently. And I have to go to one of their meetings and get on their agenda to do that. So I don't know how many positions would be involved. Certainly, it would be a librarian. And we use the same, if they agree, they would use the same process that we use here. We'll give samples and, you know, templates and all that sort of thing, and then I'll work with them that way. Also, the tax office, I've talked to the tax assessor, with the, to Trish, and, you know, she has some questions, and I brought that up last, last week. So, you know, whether or not one, you want to be one for the board or not, or if you do a general statement. I've researched a number of towns, twenty to twenty-five towns in New Hampshire, all different sizes. And obviously, the bigger you get, the more formal, especially if there's, you know, town managers involved and all that sort of stuff. So, you know, we're not there at that point. You know, we could, we could actually come up with a statement, but even when we get back, we can, you know, we'll add that to the, to the list. I haven't talked to any other departments other than, than the library and to the tax office. And that'll cover, assuming that we do those, that'll cover just, there may be a part-timer here or there.
The only thing I'd have to say about Trish's position, I mean, she is elected, so.
Well, that's the point, and that was.
There's plenty of RSA's governing that.
Yeah, well, so like your position here.
Plenty of RSA's governing that.
There, there are. But again, just setting a precedent certainly helped. If we had one, for example, for the board before we started this whole process, then the precedent is set, okay? But when questions do come up, I think I should bring it to the board, and the board can decide what they want to do with it. So that was a question that came up. But, you know, other departments, and I don't want to go through that whole list of over there, but there's, there's very few, there's the historical society, and you don't want to, I don't think you want to draw any of those. And what about cemeteries, you know? Person who mows the lawn in the cemetery, I'm not sure we have to get into that kind.
Depends how much time you have.
Just because I'm retired, don't pick on me. So, but, so I'm really pleased, and you've had a chance, I don't know if you had a chance to review them or not. And I do want to thank each of the department heads because they were really good in this process. This is the first time a member of them has been through this process, and it's difficult. But hopefully, we made it as simple, simple for them, or simpler for them to be able to, to come up with this. And these are, these are their descriptions. These are not, you know, we're plug and play kind of stuff. We did give recommendations, okay, and we, we use other town examples, not even necessarily in New Hampshire. We, we did this nationally. And it was really a good process. I was very pleased with the outcome. But yeah, when you look at them, they're going to be in different formats. For example, the police department have S O Gs in place, and you're not going to rewrite those. Those are already there. So, but we went through each of those with the chief, and the, I, what he finally, what was finally submitted to me, I understood had his, not only his approval, but maybe there were some edits that he had made. I don't have the S O Gs to compare the old ones to the new ones. I just got the new ones. So it worked out really, really well, and I wanted to thank each of the managers for their assistance.
Thank you, Mark. What you did with your summer?
Well, I don't ski, so I have all winter, you know, we'll be here in February, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. I just want, you know, just as a general question, I'm not sure, someone had mentioned, this is on Mary Lou. Is that, that just for this year, or, or, you know, were you going to allow her to use?
We haven't decided.
Okay. Because you, you'll come up against it again next year, too.
Yep. That was the last couple of years.
Yeah, okay.
Have you been down here when they have their?
Yeah, I, I came down here and I turned around. You know.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Close to the town.
It was, it's busy. I only came the one time, because I was told it was chaos, and I just, I said, I'll go look for myself. And it's busy, so.
What do we think about the minutes?
You got fifty minutes in a vision room? I just come.
Yeah, I don't have it. I didn't, I'm not even going there, but, but you know.
What do we want to do about the, my words to?
Actually, we sent off for a bit. That's it?
No.
No, it's like.
Talked about it again next week?
No. They did Ford Michael a, a list ad for a snow crusher. I don't see any of it. Getting hold of person or not. When you're on more oxygen. Twelve foot, this is what he's looking for.
Says on the minutes of Pine Cliff will be graded again when we're back there. An idea?
Next year.
Well, sinking holes before then. And by the way, the, the speed monitors.
And it only goes to ninety-nine?
Doesn't go at all.
I didn't know.
They got a dry erase board underneath it so you can mark your high score.
I noticed it was not working, like not long after you put it there.
Every time I see that, that's what I think of, two of the year's speed, replace it with your score. Yeah, I don't think it's wanting to do it. The board also agreed to allow the Fall Mountain friendly, Fall Mountain friendly to use the town hall. I think you, I think you mean Fall Mountain food shop. To use the town hall in five or six years this year only.
Is it a food shelf or friendly meals?
It's true.
Fall Mountain friendly meals. Fall Mountain food shelf.
There's two different organizations, but from what I.
Well, it's friendly meals, but friendly meals.
Anybody here still can answer that? Susan, can you answer that question?
What?
Is it friendly meals or is it Fall Mountain food shelf that puts the baskets together?
The food shelf.
Food shelf.
Thank you.
So we correct that?
I moved.
As amended.
As amended, anyway.
All in favor?
All in.
Old business. Or am I missing something? Eyes in the back.
Old business was your job description.
Did you get a chance to call?
D E S. I did receive something from Rosemary, though, that I will share with everybody's email if you get it.
Yeah, I got it.
Yes, you did.
Which was about.
Well, last Friday, correct?
There was a big article right up about drawing down.
It's on line, yeah.
About the, the depths of lakes when you're drawing down.
I, I responded to that as well. Did you get my response?
I sent the same to him.
I didn't see a response either.
I did get that.
I didn't get any response.
No, I didn't see any responses.
Response from, I didn't respond. I sent it to hurry mail and the three.
I responded to all people on.
I didn't see it. I didn't get one.
I didn't get your response either. That didn't come from D E S, so that came from.
That came from me.
Lake Warren Association, right?
Not Lake Warren Association, just me.
Just you?
Yeah, it was online.
Did you get it from D E S?
It was online.
Online.
Right.
I didn't realize it was.
And I spoke, and I called Sarah Steiner as well, but she hasn't come back from D E S, and she's up to here.
My only comment, and I don't know if you, if, what you found out, but my only comment was what was submitted, I had talked in terms of six feet of drawdown, and we were talking fifteen inches.
Yeah, but still, it's, it's, Bob, it, it does a number on the silt, on the erosion, on the aquatic life, on the plant life. Just to clean up one area, it's, you know.
Well, you know, I'm, I don't have all the technical data, but if.
But you do have, but you will have.
If the, if one is submitted, supports us an average of six feet, okay, and that's what the article is written on. And we're talking something significantly less than that, no worse than a bad summer, okay? I actually measured my dock today. It would give me another four feet out from where I currently am. Fifteen, I measured fifteen inches water depth, and it'd be four feet from where the water currently is. So we're not talking a significant amount. If we were to draw six feet down like the article suggested, well, you know, that's half the pond in most places, so.
I think the article was talking about any, any drawdown.
It's specifically stated in there.
We went, we went through this a number of years ago, and it was not recommended to be done on our lake.
You know, this year, this year actually is probably too late to draw down.
Somebody from D E S.
So, so Rock, did you call them, or did you?
We're going to have her.
Okay.
That, that, it all depends on what your objective is, your, your management objective. I had Fish and Wildlife tell me that when you draw that particular pond down, because there's so many lagoons or whatever, very shallow lagoons, what you do is you push all the little fish out into the open water, and they get eaten. So then, then that's the Fish and Wildlife's perspective. So now, if you look at it from a water clarity, you, you would want to draw it down six feet or more because then when you let the fresh water back in, you, you diminish the, the, what do they call it? The, not potassium, the.
Phosphorus.
Phosphorus, yeah, thank you. So it depends what you're managing it for, as to whether or not you want it up or down, or.
The original.
And for how long.
Right.
Now, if you're managing it, for instance, for flood control, most, many communities will lower their.
Sure.
Their level in the, you know.
Yeah, but we would, this, the, the request was based on, you know, cleaning up the shoreline, is best.
Well, that was your, your request for your shoreline.
I know. I know, I made the request.
Get yourself some waders and go out and clean up your shoreline.
Well, you could do that, you could do that.
Tim, what does Fish and Games say about?
Waiters are gonna get sucked off, sucked off my feet.
What does Fish and Games say about literally work by Comitches? That pretty much dried up this time. Where, where did those poor fish go?
I remember what's.
Then on top of that, you put two mosquito ponds in.
But my only point is that your management criteria that determines whether or not, and so DES is gonna be able to tell us how different water levels are going to affect the pond, but they're not gonna actually have a recommendation, I wouldn't think that they have.
Right, the question to DES should be, though, what was requested? If we draw, if we drew the, draw the lake down, you know, fifteen inches or thereabouts, what would be the effect on the pond? Now, if it comes up, and forgetting the article, whether the article pertains to it or not, but, you know, I'm not looking to to destroy anything, obviously.
But something will be destroyed, regardless of how it's part down, you take it.
You know, two years ago, we had a drought, okay, and it was.
Well, that's a natural.
And so, uh, my, my opinion, it's just a personal opinion, it's not gonna be any worse than when we have a bad.
Well, we'll drown down while you're on vacation.
No, that's fine, I mean.
Well, no, that, that's right, I mean, you're gonna have a.
Most, most lakes are drawn down around.